Talk about same for Beth was.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll get there when, you know, we have plenty of time this evening. I certainly don't think. Um, for how much work we have to do on this one that it will potentially take the full hour.
Um, Brian, were you able to um, view that URL I sent you?
No, when did you, I'm looking now, um.
I sent it around sixish.
No, I see your mass, oh G S Oliver. Yep.
There's, it shows a part of the parcel that I have questions on.
Is Adam Marciano, everyone else has their first and last name on there.
Could you ask him to put his full name?
I can do it, actually.
Because.
My idea about the quorum is here. I think you can start the, the, the meeting, Diem.
Okay, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is Diem Juris. I am the uh, planning board clerk. I am, I'm sitting in for the chair Heather von Maring, who is recusing herself from the Lockon subdivision um, discussion this evening as she did last time. Um, just to bring people up to speed. Um, the last time we spoke about this matter, we went through uh, our. Proceedings and or, or procedures for proceedings in order, in which case we had a presentation by the applicant. We had presentations by um, from the public. We had um, comments from town staff. We had public comment period and we are now at the point where the public comment is closed. And we are now um, going to be talking amongst the board. And we will be posing questions to the applicant. Um, when the board members have questions and I believe we are going to go back to town staff. Because they have some further updates. So if I am correct, we have from the applicant. We have Mr. Tarby, who's the attorney. Ms. Etzel, who is a representative of the owner of the property, Mr. Bob Murray. And um, we have Mr., I'm gonna mispronounce her name, I apologize, Mr. Marchiano.
Uh, that, that's good. Yep, that's correct.
Um, and he, if you're looking on the participant list, that person, I believe you are Adam, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and we have a number of butters and neighbors as well on the meeting. So um. Why don't we, um, first of all, does the board, does any of the members of the board want to say something quickly? Or would you prefer that we go to town staff and get updates from them?
No comments. Thank you. On to staff.
Okay, Heather?
Yeah, I was actually gonna say that maybe before we speak, I could use a refresh. I can't seem to find in my notes what people were saying in the hearing, so I need a reminder of where we were at.
Okay, um, well, I guess that's a great segue to you, Brian, because you do actually have a memo that you wrote. Um, reviewing some of the inputs from the public and so I wanted to just turn it over to you.
Sure, so um, I will just go over um, uh, the memo, the memo that I had sent. And there's been very few updates since then, so I'll just go through that. Um, and then. Um, Beth, uh, the town engineer is on the line as well. And um, she can follow up with her memo that was issued yesterday. Um, okay, so um, this is a series of, of neighbor requests and what we, uh, Beth. Um, the, then the town engineer, myself and, and Mr. Marchianda. Um, spoke about this and there's been several conversations after, so I'm gonna, I'll update everyone. So first, uh, the number one, the neighbor request was that the demolition should take place within ninety days. Basically, we felt that this was a reasonable ask. Um, and um. I believe, uh, Mr. Murray is in attendance. Um, but um, we believe this is a, this is a reasonable ask and we'd like to get his. Um, a, a, a condition. We do, we are concerned about, since this is a winter demolition, that the site be maintained to prevent any erosion and other potential adverse site conditions, but um, we thought that that was a reasonable request. The next is that lot four should be maintained through a condition on the subdivision. We also agree with this. Um, what we were thinking was that it should be mowed and that all underground utilities shall be accessible at all times, you know, kept free and clear. Um. The next request was that a landscaping plan would be required and that the trees be saved. Um, uh, the landscaping plan was provided and shows the preservation of those three perimeter trees. Um, based upon the new plan, so the applicant responded to that neighbor request. Next was, um, a, a new fence should be installed on lot one, um, as the existing fence is going to be demolished. Um, and a, so a new privacy fence is seen on the landscaping plan that was provided, uh, so that has been, um, closed out. Um, the next is to relocate the proposed recharge system from the west side of the property to the east side of the property. Um, the applicant has moved this system, so um, that has been addressed. Um, so this has changed since this memo was issued. Um, this neighbor request was to, that the construction access should be on Loring Court and not Lockone. As Loring is wider and has less vehicle travel. So um, our, for our, our response from the beginning was that, um, maybe there could be some, the first portion could be on, on Lockone. And then the rest of the port, uh, the rest of the phase, actual house construction phase could be on Loring Court. But the, um, the owner and applicant have already agreed to move. Um, to move the construction entrance to Loring Court. So that, that has now been addressed. By doing that. Um, I received a, a comment that there should potentially be a, um. A condition that would be put on the permit. Because of that is that any significant damage to the Loring Court roadway during construction will be corrected by the developer. So this is something that just came up that we would have to um, talk about as a potential. These are, I put, these are all potential conditions that are based upon the town engineer's memo and mine. So this is one thing that has not been talked about, um, either at this table or with the, um, with the owners. Um, in terms of loose ends. That's um, one of them. The other loose end is this road maintenance agreement. So the more that the engineer and I were talking about this, road maintenance agreements are, should definitely be. In every single subdivision that is new, where there's a new road and new houses being built. We found that through Lock Street, what ended up happening on this, uh, on, on that situation was that the two new owners basically. Um, uh, were almost footing the bill for potentially more than what was required. Um, by, you know, the, a normal standard private way. So we actually think that in this case, that a road maintenance agreement, um, would not, would not make sense. And that's something that we can certainly talk about. I tried to get a hold of legal counsel today to talk about that. Um, but when you actually take, take this whole exercise through, going through a road maintenance agreement for a portion of the end of the road. It gets very sticky very quickly and the idea is we should just potentially just let the mass general law. Uh, reign and not try to memorialize it and just, um, let that happen. So that, as of now, those are the two main things that we're, um, for me, that we need to talk about. So one is the construction access. And two is the potential expunging of this road maintenance agreement. Um, uh, the other, the last uh, request from a neighbor was that a construction end date of twenty twenty-one should be a condition on the permit. Um, our subdivision rules and regs state that the applicant has two years from the date of endorsement. And we recommend that the board continues to use that provision of the two years, so we do not, we did not agree with this request of a construction end date. The engineering department did request the water main to be looped and that a utility easement for the town gets drawn up and recorded with the help from the legal department. So that's something that would take place as a condition, but would not take place in, uh, this very moment. So, sorry for that long-winded uh, explanation. Um, but these are all potential conditions that we can talk about, but like I said, the two main things that we are, that for me was the construction access. And the road maintenance, um, a, a, agreement.
Um, great, uh, I think if the board had any questions of Brian before we move on to listen to Beth. This, so we have this fresh in our minds. Maureen or Heather?
Um, I do, um, just a small point, but not irrelevant. Um, the demo demolition request, I just wanna make sure that's clear. That the, can you go back to that, Brian? Just scroll up or down, however you consider that. Uh, let's see, the take place within ninety days of the decision of granting the approval. That it has to be, the appeal period has to pass before that can be done. So you're following me, Brian? Did I lose, Brian?
Yes, no, no, you're following me. Um, yeah, so after the decision, uh, it would take roughly a, a week for the, for it to get filed. And then there's this twenty day appeal period, so we're talking about thirty days, so it'd be sixty days after the end of the appeal period.
Right, so that just, if any language is picked up, we ought to be really clear that it's whatever we're doing, it's after the ending of the appeal period, right? We, we can't, nobody can be asked to be demolishing and counting those days during the appeal period.
Right.
Um, anyway, um, then on lot four, I'm still not, just maintenance. I wanna know who owns lot four and I certainly don't mind saying it's got to be maintained. But I'm, somehow I'm still murky on what's going on with that.
Sure, so that lot four is going to be retained by Mr. Murray, who is the current owner. Of, of all of these lots.
Right, so if he's owning it, he's owning it.
Mm-hmm.
And legally, how do we structure this? For the, well, I don't know quite how that works.
Um.
Struggling.
It, it's certainly something, um, that is unique. Um, here, let me get it in a good spot, so.
I mean, it's helpful to have it on the screen, but I do visualize it. So he owns this.
It's this, so there is, also there was talk that this was a landlocked parcel. It's, it's not, it's not.
Right.
Yeah, it's not, it, it does have frontage.
Right.
Okay, well, we, not, I'm not saying you said this, but it was talked about all last meeting as a landlocked parcel.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Clear that it's not, yeah. Um, yeah.
So does that go into the condition of a, man?
Well, the question is, um, in my mind, what, what exists for any such parcel that's owned? And non-buildable in the town. Do we, we must certainly have. Um, we must certainly have ordinances which deal with um, maintenance of properties. Does it simply fall underneath that?
I mean, it's, it's like any other property that's not buildable. I mean, obviously whoever owns it has to pay taxes on it. We don't have to stipulate that, if that's what you're saying. It's odd, but I think it makes sense since it's, it is being carved out. We understand what's going on. The idea is that the current owner of lot four is trying to eventually acquire this property. But we, who knows when or if or any of that, but that's the plan. And then to put this whole thing together in order to have a conforming duplex lot.
Right, um, but you know, regardless of the eventual disposition. In order, we, we want lot four to ma- maintained. If we put a condition on the subdivision, does it actually carry any more legal weight? Than the existing town ordinances which deal with maintaining properties? That's, I mean, if we put it on there, does it really matter if we put it on there or not? Um, nobody, none of, no one from the town will be going in to see whether or not lot four is being maintained. Um, that will be up to the neighbors to do so. And so the question is, if we put it in the, in this agreement, in the subdivision agreement. Does that somehow give the town greater leverage than otherwise, it otherwise might have?
Um, yes, it does help, plus there's, there's some of, there's going to be um, an easement. That's going to be going through lot four, um, that we wanna have free and clear. Um, so I think it does help us and it has a place for us to turn to specifically.
So I have a question. He doesn't, right now, so. The ownership, I don't know what to call it, the property on Lockone is own. How's, how's he get access to maintain lot four?
Here.
Oh, okay.
This is access.
Okay.
So this is, this is actually, so this is the, this is somewhat of an issue because this is apparently where many people park. Here and here. Um, sometimes, um. Uh, apparently these residents park here, because it makes sense, because it's not bothering anybody.
Well, that area also has, I mean, in one of the, in the existing conditions, it talks about abandoned, um, utilities. And then there's new utilities going in there. And then there's a utility easement as well. So I'm unclear as to whether this land has to be kept clear of structures. I mean, I guess it doesn't matter for our discussion now, but um. That's also something that will complicate issues with um, future development. But I think, I think I agree with Maureen and Brian, you seem to indicated that if we do put language in that lot four has to be maintained. That gives us a stronger hand if we do actually have to come to some sort of, if we require compliance. Um, measures. So the question would be, what sort of language could we put into the subdivision? Which makes it clear, um, what, what maintained means?
So um, other than mowing and I guess, um, the engineer could, could. Um, elaborate a little bit on what free and clear of the, um, of the easement would mean. But outside, outside of mowing and keeping that clear, I don't know what else we would.
No trash, sorry.
Okay, right, no dumping. I mean, if they put in a bunch of native plants which don't require mowing, let's say, and turn it into, you know, pollinator habitat, that would be great. They wouldn't have to do any maintenance other than.
You don't, we do not want that.
I, I'm not sure why we don't want that.
Because it'll look like hell.
Well, I invite you to my front yard, which does not look like hell and is full of native plants which provide pollinator habitat. Um, but I think there's a question, I, I don't know what maintain means. So maybe we can bring on the town engineer to discuss what free and clear means.
Are we allowed to even say that? Cause it's not like we make sure that everyone's normal lots are maintained. There's no enforcement for people's properties right now who don't maintain them.
But this is part of a subdivision.
Right, but I'm saying, is it? Like, if we don't normally do that, why would we do that here? Just playing devil's advocate.
No, Brian's muted, but I'll jump in. Nobody's, um, basically, this is a landlocked parcel right now. And it, that's really vulnerable and most people aren't butters to a landlocked parcel. That somebody else owns. It's really, it, I'm not, this is troublesome frankly.
But let's say that it was not, let's say that lot four were part of lot three. What, what is it that makes it so much different than if it were simply an extension of lot three? You would still rely upon the owner of lot three to maintain that back lot.
Well, because lot three is presumably heading toward a development, a completion and a sale. So there's a certain, I think, always a logic that we have to apply to anything we're reviewing. And lot, I'm not, lot three is going to end up in a very conventional situation. Where you have a likelihood of an owner, a high degree of likeliness, that, uh, that'll, that owner will be maintaining the property. But the lot four, it could be, uh, you don't know what's going to happen to the Lockone Street property. And that's really vulnerable and could be a real issue for the new owners of lots two and three. Um, and also the person who's the butter on Lockone, I mean, just that lot four thing could be a real mess.
Is there a definition?
Beth, could I, sorry, this is Beth, I was gonna ask if I could make a possible recommendation. So, um, it sounds like the applicant for the subdivision is interested in combining lot four with the property at the end of Lockone Street, which she currently does not own. I don't know what the timeline is for a potential acquisition of that property, but one way to kinda get around this right now. Maybe to be to combine lot three and four into one and then have the subdivision approve. And the applicant could always come back with an A and R to subdivide that lot four piece. Once they've acquired the property on Lockone, um, I don't know, I don't know if that fits in the timeline, but I would imagine.
Yes.
I would imagine the construction of the road and lot, you know, the house on lot three will take, you know. Eight months to a year at least.
Yep.
Um, so there's some time there to potentially work out those details.
I think that sounds like a good, that's a much more appealing arrangement.
That assumes they're planning to develop the two families soon, right?
I think what it does is it kinda kicks the ball down the road.
Yeah, but if someone buys lot three, then they would own lot four, you're saying? So it would have to.
Right, I just, I don't, again, I don't know, and this really is a question for the applicant. I don't know what their timing is. Um, in terms of trying to combine lot four with that property at the end of Lockone. If it worked out that they planned to do that before lot three is sold, then this, what I'm suggesting, works out fine. If it's years apart in the timeline, then obviously that doesn't work out, so. I'm just throwing it on the table as an option to discuss with the applicant.
Okay, um, Brian, I hope you made a note of that.
Um, I mean, the, I believe, um, the owner, or the attorney for the owner is here, we could.
Yeah, I just wanna.
Hang on, hang on, I think we, I think that Beth's, uh, what, um, option here or concept, it makes a lot of sense. So before the attorney gets brought, Mr. Tarby gets brought into this, um, let's play that out. I think that solves a lot of the problem, because basically then the, uh, uh, the, what? The completion of lot three is going to either, the property, I mean, in the end, of course, lot three, that house could carry the backyard of going into lot four, so, um, we are, I don't, I don't think there are any guarantees in life. And I wouldn't wanna set this up to create this, some long-term, uh, what, um, arrangement with lot four just hanging out there. So I think that could create a lot of motivation to develop, um, uh, proceed and see what happens with Lockone. And if it doesn't come through, it doesn't come through. But, uh, the owner of the, um, the developer can hang on to lot three. With lot four, if he's hoping to, whatever, cash out with the other side on Lockone.
I think that, that is, is. It's one way of playing it out. The other way of looking at it is that if the owners of the, of the land on Lockone don't want to sell. In the time, before lot three gets developed, regardless of what, what Mr. Murray wants to do. Then that he's stuck with lot three. Lot four could never be, we could never subdivide it. Because it would be sold to the next owner. And there's no way that owner would sell off lot four. He'd have to sell that lot, lot four off to whoever purchased the lot on Lockone. I think that throws, it makes it a much more complicated land arrangement.
I, I prefer the other way. I just think it gives, um, um. It, it's a. It, it just, I mean, in the end, if it's not looking good at the end of Lockone Street and Mr. Murray wants to sell a lot. His new house on lot three, he's really eager to get, you know, if that's his timing, then he has a choice. Either, uh, he figures out how to offer a price probably is the main issue to the, um, owner of the, of the property at the end of Lockone. And succeeds, or he can't do it. And then our, I always feel as if, you know, I'm often surprised as these things play out. And then, because I've been on the board for quite a few years, of looking down the road later and I see, I end up knowing these people and they're really unhappy. Or sometimes I don't know them, but they come back to the planning board and say, what did you do? I don't wanna make a mess for the, um, owners of the houses on lot two and three and the, um, the butter on Lockone Street. And I think this is a real, um, concern.
Oh, Heather, do you, do you have an opinion on this?
Uh, no, I thought we were gonna ask what their timeline was instead of just speculating.
Okay, um, we're, we're kind of jumping around topics here in that we were looking at what Brian presented. Do we wanna go directly to developer at this point, or do we wanna continue, put this question as something to address to the developer? In a little bit and finish looking at Brian's memo?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Um, I, I just will point out, the timeline's always going to be, we wanna, we wanna protect everything we can, you know, we wanna get going. So, um, you know, it's, I, I don't know what advantage that is, we can ask, but I don't think that's the real issue. The real issue is what are we doing, um, for, um, out of the, what, concern? For protecting the butters to, uh, in, let's say, a year from now, the butters to lot four. Uh, that could, I, I just don't think that's responsible on our part.
Okay, um, I, I still think it's worthwhile listening to what Mr. Murray has to say. But we, that's certainly something we're gonna be addressing. Brian, can we, can we get back to your memo and see if anyone has any other questions on it before we move on?
I actually did have one other. Um, Brian, could you refresh my memory on, on our memory maybe? Uh, what was the, um, comment from, uh, town council, Art Krieger? When we had the last subdivision approval on, I think it was lock, Lock Street. There was something he said he didn't think was, that was, we should try to deal with, and we didn't.
So, yeah, what that was, um, I, so I haven't, I, I've tried to get a hold of him today and was, was unable to. But it had to do with something with the standard conditions that were set forth in our rules and regulations. Um. So that's still something that, um, he said that, um, but in terms of the exact detail, I don't, I don't have. I knew, I, I, I know that it was something wrong with the standard conditions set forth in six, seven, four. Um, that he said in our last time that we should, I think his words were, we should probably change.
Can you tell us what six, seven, four was?
Oh, it, um, no, so that's, six, seven, four goes through, um, many, many, many standard conditions. Um, I, I don't know which one of, of six, seven, four, um, is. I can certainly go there, but it's not gonna offer much help for you.
Well, I, we certainly, it was something he thought we ought to correct, so if we can't do that. Uh, obviously, in the subdivision regs, we probably can through our approval.
Right, so why don't, Brian, if you could just, we, I don't know if going through it right now, as you pointed out, would be helpful. Until we know exactly what it is that Art was talking about, so why don't we just put it on the list of things that we need to worry about? Um, did you have anything else on this that you were concerned about, Maureen?
Um, that's all I'm concerned about, thank you.
Okay, uh, Heather, did you wanna talk to this?
Are you listening to this?
Um, Brian?
I just.
I just, you know, I don't have that.
Uh, hold on, I gotta meet somebody here, hold on. Okay, sorry about that.
No problem. Heather? Are you with us, Heather?
I am, I don't have any other issues right now.
Okay, great. And so Brian, if you could scroll back up, I have to remember what my, what my points were. So I think, uh, so I think it, when we get to it, we should show everyone what the new landscaping plan is like. And I know I had some questions about that. So when we get to more board discussion, I want to go through that. The 90 days, I think on number one, as Maureen pointed out, we want to, the question I have is, is it 90 days since, until they reach the permit? Is that the time period we want? When they actually get, when they're able to actually start the demo? I mean, you, you essentially said it's really 60 days after the decision.
Right, it would be correct.
What, what actual time period do we want?
I, I mean, I, I think a reason, we could say a reasonable is 90 days from, until the, until the appeal period expires. 90 days from when the appeal period expires.
Right, that was the piece I'm missing. And whether you still want 90 days, I don't know. But it's definitely got to be after the expiration of the appeal period.
Right, I mean, so let's say that we, let's just put up a calendar here and see what's reasonable for, so let's assume that, let's say we pass it tonight. And then the appeal period is, what, how did you say it was, 20 days?
It's, I mean, it's 20 days after the decision is filed. Let's assume I'll file the decision in, in less than five days. So let's say by the 20th. And then it'll be, so 20 days from, the 20th would be about October 10th. So that will be the start date.
And then three months from October 10th.
Three months from October 10th.
I didn't understand where, why someone said this. Could someone explain to me why they, why the residents care how many days until the demo?
They just, I don't think they care too much about the days. They just want to ensure that the building is coming down swiftly and not going to linger there as, as it has been for many years.
Okay.
Yeah.
The days I don't think matter. I think it's more of just, you know, put a, put a timeframe on it, get it done and, yeah.
Cause they'd rather have the houses, you mean?
Correct.
And they also probably don't want to have essentially abandoned buildings sitting there and decaying. So October, November, December, so 90 days past October 10th is January 10th. I don't know what is reasonable, but certainly, I mean, 60 days would get us to December 10th.
Why not 60?
So I think 60 would be fine.
They can take a building down in about, I am not kidding you, six hours.
I know, my neighbor's house went down that fast.
Right, they're just, they go.
Yeah, 60 is fine and it ensures that it's done before the depth of winter, which is a concern. And I assume that that's not a burden on the developer, but that's just my assumption. And when we speak with the representative, we can verify that. The other date that I was looking at, Brian, is on your number eight. Section seven, four, six, seven, four, one states as two years from the date of endorsement. Isn't that two years to begin the project, not two D years to end the project?
That is correct.
So it's not, it kind of doesn't sync with the request. The request was for an end date.
I think, I, I believe the end date is unreasonable.
So two years from the date of endorse, so we, we don't expect it to be done within two years. But we do, it, it has to begin within two years.
But yes, but according to Winchester subdivision control law, they, they have to start it. There's certainly, you know, some, some, sorry, there, there, the request was, is certainly different from, from the subdivision rules and regs. The subdivision rules and regs are quite lax in terms of they just have to start it. It doesn't have a finish date. However, I think it's an unreasonable request to force a finish date by December of 21. Or really for, you know, this is not some extremely, you know, huge, large tract of land where there's going to be, you know, decimated. I mean, this is not the type of situation where you, where I would put a, some type of an end date. I think it's, again, I think it's unreasonable to put any type of a, a, an end date on a, on a permit for a subdivision in this case.
Yeah, I'm thinking about what the general turnaround time is for a single house. And certainly there are three structures and I don't think they're all going to be built in sequence. They will be going on in parallel. But I think a construction time of a minimum of a year is probably not unreasonable. So I, I think I agree that I don't think we can put a construction end date of 2021. So. Okay, those are all the, those are all the comments I had on your document. So I think at this point, if we could switch over to the town engineer and her memo. Beth, are you with us still?
I am, yep, thank you. So I didn't really have too, too much to add to the conversation. A lot of the comments that we had were addressed. I just had a couple minor things that I can work with the app con in terms of locations of water gates and the water lines. Just to, where the line is being looped through the properties. And then also just a request to add the stone bounds to the plan in accordance with the subdivision regs, which was a new request from our previous memo. So not too much for me to talk about here tonight.
Okay, excellent. So at this point, I think we're still, I still have a couple of things that I'd like to talk about before we bring the developer and the owner into the conversation. Does anyone on the board want to start, have anything to talk about?
No. No.
Okay, so I just have, Brian, if you could bring up that website that I asked you to pop up. So this is from Mass GIS and it overlays the property line of the, as far as Mass GIS understands, onto the terrain. And the concern I'm having right now is the property that is shown going to the east towards the unnamed street to the right. And I have not been able to find the name of that street. But I note that the property line overlays what seems to be building and equipment from a business or something. And so my concern here, one of the questions I have is, do, is this an encroachment by the other business on this property? And how is this being, going to be managed? And the other thing is that I want to bring up is also dealing with landscaping. So it's in a similar location. So Brian, if you could pop up the landscaping part of the, of the site plan or the plans. And I forget which page it is, there we go, the landscaping plan. So when I'm looking at the landscaping plan, I see exactly one tree to be planted. And that's it. Other than the three existing trees to remain, there's no indication of what landscaping is happening on lots two or three. There's no indication of what's happening on the unbuildable part of lot three. So going down into that area that we just saw, now it's to the left. And so there's a rather steep embankment. There's no indication of that's going to be cleared of shrub. Are we planting trees there? How is it going to be maintained by the property owner? So I find this landscaping plan really lacking in terms of any real landscaping other than the one tree and the retaining malls. So those are my concerns at the moment. And let me check my notes.
Oh, yeah, you're right. What, has this gone, you're, we're supposed to be hearing from the designer review committee.
That's a good question.
What happened?
This is Beth, can I just jump in for a minute?
I was, go for it, Beth.
You know, I, I'd have to look at the subdivision regs. But in terms of a subdivision approval, the board is approving the subdivision of a lot and the creation of, in this case, the, the improvements to the roadway and the, the creation of the additional hammerhead area. I don't think the board under the regs is, I don't think your authority stretches to the specific landscaping around the proposed homes. That's really done through, you're just creating the lot. You know, the building permit process is where the homes, and we, we run into this all the time with the, with the stormwater piece, right? Because although the stormwater is shown on this plan, they're not tied to the location or size of the houses that are approved as part of this subdivision. So I'm not sure, and I have to look at the subdivision regs, but I'm not sure the landscaping plan that's required as part of the subdivision extends to landscaping on a lot. I think it's primarily to address the, like, the location of these street trees. And, and then also like any trees that will remain as part of the construction on the, on the lots, which I think they've shown here along lot one.
But to that point, shouldn't there be street trees?
There's one street tree on lot one.
So.
So Brian and I spoke with the applicant about this on Friday. It's really, this is a very busy plan, so I realize it's hard for folks to see. But where the new hammerhead is, there's, there's only, there's curb and there's sidewalk. There's no grass strip being created there. So what Brian and I suggested the applicant was that they show this tree on lot one, although it won't necessarily be a street tree because it is on that private property. It's as close to what we could do in terms of putting in a street tree in that location.
We can't make sure that there are planting strips when streets are extended?
Yeah, I mean, that's up for the board to discuss. That's not what was proposed here. They just proposed, you know, the sidewalk that would, the curb, the sidewalk, and then it would butt up to the property line. I don't believe, Brian, I don't know, on the other section of, of Loring Court in this area, I'm not sure if there is a grass strip out there.
I don't believe so, but we, we can check that. What, just to touch a little bit on what Beth was saying is that when we, when we talked with the applicant about this landscaping plan, what we told them what was important was certainly any trees that are going to be destroyed. And then any trees that are on the perimeter that are going to be, going to remain. And like Beth said, that this was the way that the current plan sits, there was no grass strip. And this was the best chance that we could get at a street tree by doing this. Even this is a little bit of a, I mean, it's on, it's on private property. But I, I believe, I, I agree with Beth in that we are setting up the road. We are setting up the, the, the infrastructure. It's kind of borderline of whether or not we're really, you know, talking about shrubs and that type of thing for the houses. Cause like Beth said, they're not tied to these, exactly these houses. They're tied to a square footage at the moment. But in terms of how it looks or where it is, sits on the lot, we're not really, we can't really dictate those types of landscaping. The landscaping we can are certainly shade trees and any perimeter trees that affect other, other homeowners.
Right.
Yeah, my point was that that was something maybe we want to think about so that when this happens, we're making sure we get street trees and a planting strip.
Well, we, there's something in there. I promise there's something in there, but where's the right of way? What, am I missing something? What happened to the right of way? There's always a right of way.
Like, shouldn't we have street guidelines?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the right of way is this dark, and Brian, maybe you can put it on the plan, but it's the dark black curved line.
That's what I would have thought. What's, why are we not getting?
And then, and then on the other side of that, Brian, maybe you can show where the sidewalk or what the applicant has proposed as sidewalk here. So you can see the curb, go back to like in front of lot one and lot two, Brian. So the, kind of that double line, right? That's the curb line. And then everything between the curb and the property line is proposed to be sidewalk. I, you know, that's, I'm not sure why the applicant specifically designed it that way. I'm guessing it probably has to do with the radius that would be required to add a few more feet in terms of grass strip. But that's certainly within the board's, you know, jurisdiction. If you want to ask the applicant to add a, a planting strip along that, that area.
I think we do.
The other thing is there's, there's a lot of utilities in here. So we struggled even on lot one, where to place that tree with the water lines and then the utilities, water and sewer and gas services to each of the houses. So does that need cognizant of, you know, that we can't, there's not a lot of room out there to add trees. And so, you know, it might be, might be able to fit another one maybe in here. And maybe there's other areas on Loring Court that you could ask the applicant to add a street tree in lieu of adding them right in front of one of these, these three lots.
In lieu of what, Beth? I, you were, it didn't come through clearly.
Sorry, it, so I think there's, is, with the driveway openings and the utilities that are out there servicing the three lots and then the looped water main that's going through here, there's not a lot of space for planting. So it's possible that you could ask the applicant to install something on, somewhere else on Loring Court in lieu of adding an additional tree in front of those three lots. I don't know, looks like there's some trees that exist on the opposite side of Loring Court. I'm not sure what the, what the opportunities are on the, I guess that's the north side of Loring Court.
Well, another thought is the curb cuts are, looks like these, you know, two lane, basically driveways. Rather, we could ask for shrinking the driveway entrances to what used to be the old fashioned, single lane for a driveway. And that would give some opportunity for trees as well.
Excuse me. So I think those are, I, I'm not sure how we would write that as in conditions. I think those are really good points.
Well, hang on, I didn't hear any response. But I do think we see these very wide drives. And I think that, I, I know we've got a curb cut bylaw, but this is a subdivision. We have some authority over this. So let's shrink the driveways to get the trees.
I like that, Maureen.
Thank you.
Hi, hi.
And while I'm at it, before I forget though, this is supposed to be, under the subdivision regs, it's supposed to go to the design review committee. We're supposed to get a recommendation from them. And I think we could get some thoughts on this one too, from them.
There are, actually, I've been going through the subdivision regs for other, looking at what we have authority to request, et cetera. So that's why I, I agree with you, Maureen. This is certainly something we have, I believe, we can work with. I, I should note that we are all supposed to, also supposed to see all trees of six inches or more caliper on the existing conditions plan. And I don't see any trees on the existing conditions plan. Let me go back to my copy.
I don't think there are any trees, it's all pavement.
Even down on the slope on lot three?
Um, that, I'm not sure, maybe on, on the slope there might be.
I mean, that's.
Certainly in the rest of the site, there, it's all building or pavement.
Right, right. And there's also supposed to be, I'm trying to find the stupid thing here, pardon me while I do some searching. An environmental and community impact analysis. All subdivision applications that create frontage for three or more lots shall include 15 copies of an environmental and community impact analysis.
They asked for a waiver for that. I thought it was a reasonable waiver based upon three houses in this, in a, in a smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood of similar sized houses.
Right, is that, that's a waiver, did the board discuss that? I can't remember.
We have not discussed, we have not discussed any waiver, that's a submission requirement. They, they're, they've, they asked for a number of waivers. They're, they've, they asked for a number of waivers from submission requirements. We have not discussed waivers yet.
Okay. So I'm just trying, I, you know, I believe that it is, what Beth is saying is we don't have an awful lot of leeway when it comes to discussing the non-public facing parts of landscaping. So that's all I was doing. So in terms of narrowing the street in order to get more green there, Beth, do you have a recommendation?
I don't. I think you would have to, the applicant would have to take a look at it and see if they can accommodate that. It's not really something I can tell you just from looking at the plan.
Okay.
But I do think we're going to advise them. They can shrink the driveway entrances too.
I think there should be like a, kind of a number of, like a goal here of a number of, you know, how many trees would you like to see here? And then we can try to get there.
Oh, I can be very clear because when, they should be shade trees. So I would say one for each lot.
So three additional.
They don't need to be more than that because if they're given sufficient, if they're real shade trees, they do take, that's all you need.
All right. So that, so, because that's something that we could, you know, a condition saying that, you know, three shade trees somewhere, somewhere along Loring Court. Because like Beth said, there are some, some restrictions here based upon the nature of the lot and, and where those utilities are. So, you know, a condition could be three, three shade, uh, street trees somewhere along Loring Court, for example. That could be a.
Right. They could be fifteen feet apart at least, because that's what you need.
But, but is this in lieu of narrowing the drives?
Well, I'm guessing they're going to need to, to get the trees in.
Not if they plant elsewhere along Loring Court.
Oh, I see what you're saying. No, no, no. Those, I thought one for each lot.
Okay. So the, so we are looking at putting the trees on this property, not sort of making up for the fact there are none by putting them elsewhere.
No, no, no. Right.
Yeah.
Because it especially needs it, let's just be clear for anybody who's listening, not just for the applicant, but the, the amount of pavement, once you get into the turnaround is, it's harsh and it's hot in the summer. You want shade over that. And actually it does, let's, just again, just logic here. That's where the little kids end up playing and riding their trikes and so on. So that's the play space. So you want that to be shaded. You want it to be nice.
Yeah, I agree with that. So anything else that we want to discuss before we, I think it's, it's a good time to bring in the applicant where we can have a discussion with them about these. And so anything else that anyone on the board wants to discuss?
No.
Okay. Nope, sorry. Was that a no? Okay. Brian, I, I think that we had the two, we had a, we had something we wanted to talk about in terms of the disposition of, of Lot Four. And we want to talk about.
The road maintenance agreement.
Road maintenance agreement, and also we want to talk about addition of shade trees. I think those are the three issues that have come up in terms of, any discussions? Did I get all those?
There was also tightening the driveways.
I agree. Yes.
So that's in addition to shade trees?
Yeah, no matter what. Yeah.
Okay. So who do we want to bring on for, who's, who's be the appropriate? We have, I think still, we, do we still have three members from the development and owners here?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to start with Adam Marchando and then go to then Joe Tarby. And then if Phyllis has anything to say, or I'm not sure, the owner, Robert Murray, might be here as well. So I say we go with Adam and then Joe Tarby, and we'll go from there.
Okay. So Mr. Marchando, if you could unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, you are loud and clear. Hi. So why don't we, why don't we take it in the order that I mentioned it? So the first thing we're going to talk about is disposition of Lot Four.
I can address that, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Tarby?
Okay. So there was a suggestion to add Lot Four to Lot Three, but I, I believe if we do do that, then we've modified the subdivision plan, which will require a new public hearing. I think the suggestion by the planner is, is the appropriate one. Mr. Murray will maintain the property. The Board of Health for the Town of Winchester certainly has the right to bring a nuisance action in the event that it's not maintained. And then we also have filed, we're going to be required to file a performance guarantee. And, you know, in the event Mr. Murray fails to live up to the condition where he's not maintaining the property, then you do have something to hold over, hold over his head since it's part of the compliance with the subdivision decision. So that would be our position on that. In the event that he doesn't acquire the Lockwin property, I'm guessing, I can't speak for him, I'm guessing that, you know, Lot Four would then subsequently be joined with either that property or Lot Three. But I think to do, to do it now, we're, we're modifying the subdivision plan and a new public hearing will be required. I think, you know, the planner's suggestion, I think, is, it's acceptable to us.
Right. I don't know that, that, I mean, as Maureen pointed out, there's a risk to the town and to the neighbors that Lot Four just sits there for years and years and years. We know that some properties in Winchester are held on for long periods of time in the hope that market conditions make them buildable. And how does the town benefit from your proposal? If there, I mean, just, there's, there's a, a question that's going to be hanging over this lot?
No, it, it's, it's clearly a, you know, legitimate question and concern. But if it, you know, if it's overgrown, if it has debris all over it, if it's not maintained, then the town certainly has the right to bring a nuisance action.
Okay. I think you've, you've presented your, your position on that. I don't know. Does the, does the rest of the board have any questions or comments?
It didn't make me feel super sure it was going to be maintained.
I'm, could you repeat that, please?
I said that didn't make me feel confident that it would be maintained.
And I'm thinking the Town of Winchester is not interested in bringing lawsuits for maintenance and it's going to stick the neighbors and the newer property owners who are going to be promised the sky. And honestly, one would hope that they're not that naive, but they are. I see it. I see these people coming back to our board saying, what can you do? We don't have our street lamps. It's like five years later. We still don't have our street lamps and the developers disappeared. That Mr. Murray's not going to disappear because he's been doing tear downs, demos, McMansions all over this town. He's not disappearing, but we don't have any leverage here. This is the time and running, oh, just closing this thing down, starting a new hearing isn't that big a deal. I'm not interested in just seeing this, a little island, Lot Four, hanging around for the Town of Winchester and the new owners to get stuck with. So I'm, I'm on record right now.
So being somewhat of a neophyte at the subdivision business, I think it would be worthwhile calling out what section of the subdivision regs we can use if we decide that we don't like the current lot layout.
And we can, we can request them to change it and we can, we can, you're talking about the conditions under which we could deny a subdivision?
That's right. If, if, if the applicant says, no, we like it that way, and we say, no, we don't like it that way, under what, under which of these various sections can we say we don't like it because of the potential impact to the neighbors and to the town? So I just want to make sure I understand if we proceed where we, where we draw our, our power from, or whatever you want to call it.
So it actually is eight thirty. The idea of us going through, I mean, it doesn't, I think either way, I would say there's not going to be an approval or denial tonight at eight thirty because we don't have time to even craft anything. So I, it sounds like that it's a good time to break in relation to, to this. We still, we could keep going, sure, but it sounds like, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we do have, we do have some timely things we need to get to concerning Fall Town meeting articles. So, and we do need to discuss the interview for the Waterfield lot. So, and I can't find the agenda. You'll pardon me. So, right.
Yeah, we've got interviews for the Heritage District too.
Right.
No, this is it. We're, we're going to.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I think that we are going to have to continue this hearing. And I, I'm pulling down a calendar. Brian, you have a better idea than I?
Yeah. So our next meetings are October sixth, or sorry, I believe that's right. It's October sixth and then the following week after that. I do know that we already have the six is six fifty-four Main Street as well as our zoning hearing. And then that will probably get, you know, six fifty-four will get continued. It might not go right away because we have to get consultants. So it, but I would imagine that this one's pretty tight, so we could probably put it to the thirteenth.
Okay. I feel, I would feel more comfortable with putting it to the thirteenth. And luckily it's not a Friday. So would, do we need a vote on this, Brian, or do we just say?
Motion to a time certain.
So I, can I get a motion to reconvene this hearing or to whatever the wording is, sorry, until a time certain, which would be October the thirteenth at, shall we say, seven thirty?
Yeah, and it's continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing. Thank you.
So moved. And I, I will put that out there, but I, and you'll need a second. But I do want to point out that I know with our special permit that there's some benefit to an applicant to withdraw and submit fresh rather than to get denied. So I just think that they ought to understand that they may be wishing to withdraw and resubmit and just revise the plan. So I don't know enough about that, but I know that with special permit, that that's something to be, that there's some benefit.
So I just one thing, before we continue this, I think that we, we should have, we should have some type of indication from the board if, if the three, if the three board members would definitely like Lot Four to be, I mean, it's a long, it's, it's basically, it's waiting a month. And if they don't know that, I think we should have a very clear, if we could have a vote, or I don't know, we don't have to have official vote or, but, I'm sorry, not a vote for, to, to approve or deny. I'm talking about specifically relating to Lot Four. Is the idea that Lot Four, under no circumstances, should be left the way it currently is? And should be another, something should be, something should be done? Or is, is that what the, I think we should have clarity on that before we continue.
I, I, my measurement of the temperature of the board is that as it stands, the uncertainty about the future of Lot Four is casting a shadow over this subdivision application.
Yes.
And that the board is concerned about the impact on the neighbors and and I, and, and whether or not the town will be able to, you know, intervene if there is an issue in a reasonable fashion. And so, I mean, if, if the board feels I have summarized it wrong, let me know. But I, I don't know that we can get any more specific than that.
You're fine, Deaf. Thank you. And also, by the way, once Brian speaks with the applicant after our meeting, I, if they are thinking they're going forward, this is one way or another. We should be getting the designer review committee's recommendations because that's part of our subdivision rules.
Yes, we should. Thank you.
Will do.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
And can we have a roll call vote?
Meister, I.
Anne and I.
Jerius, I. So, so we will reconvene on October the thirteenth at seven thirty. Thank you all for your attendance and your input this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have Chair Von Mering available to take over the reins?
So we, we, I was told, since we went over, I was told to text her when, when we're ready. So we just finished. So I'm texting her now.
Okay.
So she should be on any second. In the meantime, as we go through updates, there was a PowerPoint that was prepared last night by the manager. I, I attended the select board meeting last night. They did not, it was not like a full public hearing. And I think it was the right call. I think they, so instead, the manager decided to do the interviews first, which will be on September twenty-first and September twenty-third, as you can see here.
Brief interruption. This is for the Waterfield lot.
The Waterfield redevelopment, yes. Sorry about that. So the interviews for the five will be on the twenty-first and the twenty-third. And then the public hearing will be after those interviews on the twenty-eighth. So this actually, this act, I think is a better timeline. They chose the interview lengths to be an hour each, so that's why it's going to be over the course of two day, two days. And the select board mentioned they wanted people at their, at the interview representatives from the Housing Partnership Board as well as the Planning Board, so that we would have a virtual seat at the table. So, yeah. So that, that was, that is, that is the update, is that it's been moved, the hearing has been moved to the twenty-eighth. All five are being interviewed. The interviews will last an hour and we have a seat at the table.
Can you explain why all of them are being interviewed?
I have an opinion. I don't really, I don't know, I couldn't say exactly why.
I, I could jump in. Can I jump in?
Please.
I think that between, so the, the select board heard opinions from the Planning Board and the Housing Partnership Board. And I think there was a greater diversity of opinion on the Housing Partnership Board as to who they thought was a reason, or who should be in the mix. So they actually had the NOAA proposal in the mix because of NOAA's history as a nonprofit. And so if you looked at the, 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 the union of what the. And so if you looked at the, 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 the union of what the Planning Board thought was appropriate, our top three, and what the Housing Partnership Board thought were appropriate, there was some overlap, but they also thought they wanted to hear more, and I thought there were strong arguments for doing so, and then it came down to, well, if, if you, as the proposals were all scored by town staff, they were all very, they all came in, in, pretty close together in terms of the numeric score. So it wasn't easy to toss one out just based on that. And did it make sense to ask four or five? So I think getting all of them in there was sort of the, the compromise. Did I sum that up, Brian?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, the, the short answer is that it's complicated, because if you're just looking at the designs and the affordable unit count and the parking, which is kind of the, the bare bones of it, you could actually obviously get a great impression of what, what's going on, but it doesn't take into consideration that some firms are asking for five hundred thousand dollars. Other firms are giving two million dollars. You know, those types of things that are unrelated to the look and feel and the amount of affordable units we're getting. So all those financials make it a lot more complicated, so it was just, they felt it was, you know, if, if there really were for them that they, you know, that felt that they should make it, it seems like five is, there's not actually that much difference between that fifth one and the fourth one. I felt it's strange that, you know, everyone kind of came out with the same, not from the Select Board, but in terms of Housing Partnership Board, staff, and the Planning Board with essentially the same top three. But like I said, we didn't really take into, into consideration the financials, and I think that's, that's my opinion. I think it was the financials that brought the other two in.
The other, the other point that was brought up is that town manager is putting together a list of questions that essentially there would be starting questions of the applicants. So they at least have a uniform set of starting questions, and then the follow-up questions would be particular to whatever they answered, or whatever their design was. So I know that the Housing Partnership Board is looking for questions to pass on to the town manager, and I think it might be useful if we did as well. I don't think we need to do that as a board, but if the individual members would pass on questions they thought were of interest. The other thing that we would want to discuss is, you know, who it is that we think would, should best represent the Planning Board. There was a little bit of confusion in my mind as to whether the Select Board would be asking particular persons. They directed the town manager to look at the, the people who came up with the RFP, and since they had been in this process for a long time, and maybe make some extra selections from them to be in the, on the interview process as well. So I don't know if this, if we want to just, you know, select one of us to be on there, select two of us in case two spots are, I, I don't know how we go both during that.
Well, I was on the committee, so we did get an email asking for questions.
Okay, okay. So presumably, you would probably be, I'm presuming that you would, might be one of the select, one of the people who we would want representing us at the interview.
Yeah, I would be interested. I wasn't really sure what our roles were from the, the email, like if we're really just listening. I, I couldn't really tell.
I think the initial questions were just something that Lisa was going to send out to all of them if, if she was just asking for questions.
It says, let me know if you can participate.
Oh, okay, it's, it's further than that, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I would, I would recommend you say yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's six hours, so.
It's a chunk of time, yeah.
Yeah.
The one, the one, the one positive thing that came out, well, there are many ones, but Lisa contacted all of the applicants asking them to record a, a presentation so that the, the interview time wouldn't be taken up with them just making a presentation where you all stare at the same PowerPoint slides. So the idea would be that these would be available prior to the interviews and wouldn't waste time during the interview.
Yeah, I'm definitely interested in hearing them all. I just didn't really check my calendar yet.
Yeah, because it's supposed to be early next week, I believe. Did I get that right, Brian?
It's Monday and Wednesday, six to nine P M.
Okay, is, is Heather Von Mering with us yet?
Yep, she's on.
Hey, Heather.
Hello. Are, are you asking if I'm on because you want to determine how we're going to proceed with the meetings?
I, yeah, I, I, I'm asking if you're on, so I can stop pretending to be chair.
Oh. Well, I kind of jumped in the middle, so I didn't want to-
Yeah, yeah, I mean-
I didn't want to take over in the middle of something. So I, Brian goes, Brian, you're planning to go to both of these meetings?
I don't think I've gotten the same email. I, but I did plan on going, yes, but I, I don't think I've gotten that email yet. I wonder if she's doing staff later or something.
I'll just forward it to you, Brian, so you see what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
And Heather, did you plan to go?
Um, I would like to. I wasn't really sure about the time commitment yet.
And Dea, did you want to go? Because both of you worked on it, right?
No, I was not a member of that committee.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I think that we should have one person attend and participate in all of the interviews, just so there's consistency. But I get the feeling that we're not having a lot of volunteers stepping forward, and I'm not sure who's stepping back the fastest.
Well, I would be, I, you know, I'm pretty sure I can go. She says here, though, that it's, they're televised, so it isn't that no one else can listen. I mean, I, I sort of thought our role was listening anyway. It doesn't say who's asking the questions.
I think that the idea would be that we would be, actually be asking questions.
Okay, I couldn't tell from this email.
Yeah, did I get that wrong, Brian? I thought that was, there was certainly the impression that Lisa gave at the Housing Partnership Board last week, that she was interested in having people with domain-specific knowledge ask the follow-up questions, so that we can really ascertain how flexible they are in their proposals and, you know, what they're willing to change. And so that, the, the idea was that these extra people would be active participants rather than just listeners.
That is correct, everything you just said.
Wow, that's a first for today.
Yeah, there's-
So then, are we all set for next week then, Heather? Heather's gonna go, Brian's gonna go, Dea, and Maureen and I may listen in the background.
Well, I'm sure I'm willing to go and ask questions.
Just to be clear, I don't, I don't know, as of right now, I have not been asked to, to be part of the interview process. I certainly plan on going, but I don't believe I'm, well, I have not been asked. That's all I could, I could say. I can guarantee you, as of now, she has not asked me to be part of the interview process.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure, so we are there, and we're present, and we're following it, and keeping close, very close tabs on it. I think it's important, Brian, for you to be there.
Definitely.
Because in a lot of ways, you've taken a lot of leadership in this, and I think it's odd that you're not there, but-
Yeah.
No, I'm happy to be there and planned on it, but I-
But on behalf of the Planning Board, I would like to have you there, and I really would like to have Dea and Heather as well there, so if the three of you and can tag team it, if schedules get kind of wonky for you, I'd be fine, too. I just would like to have representation of the Planning Board and the town planner at these meetings, just to keep close tabs on it, because it is really impactful. I know it's going to come down quick to us for town meeting as well, and we need to stay really close to it. Because I anticipate, as always, that we probably, our recommendation's going to be asked about this. And we really have to have a really good understanding. I do not have the bandwidth to do it. As of right now, I got capitals all over the place, and, in a good way, is making a lot of progress and stuff, but I have it every Wednesday, every week right now. And that, and Planning Board, and, and back to school tomorrow and everything is too much, so thank you to the three of you.
Guess we didn't step back fast enough, okay?
No, no, I'm totally, no, I didn't, no. But it's not part of the interview process, because they're not inviting us, at least we, you know.
Yeah.
It's a listening.
Maureen, you have been really quiet about this. Do you, do you want to put your, your oar in the water here?
Not at all. I'm concerned about, we've got our appointments for Heritage District, and then we've got Art Krieger waiting as well. We've got to get going.
Okay, then I, I will, I cede my role to, to Heather officially, if that matters, and I will turn my mic off.
Um, with that, I, with that is an excellent update, Brian, thank you. Just an update to the Planning Board overall. I had a very good conversation with Roger Wilson, who is the co-chair of T-TAC, and in discussion on what's going on with the long-term planning of the traffic in town. We spoke briefly, and our conversation's going to continue, but, about having him come into planning and to have more of an integrated understanding of what they're up to, what they're looking for, what their goals are as a group, and we'll, we'll go from there. But we've never had T-TAC come and actually give us an overview of where they're at, what's going on, and I know Brian supports them as staff, but just like the Historical Commission, Design Review, and a lot of the other boards and commissions, I think it would be beneficial for us to hear from T-TAC directly. So I'll be working on that. Is that Heather?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I still have never been invited to one of those meetings. The only time I went is when I found it on the calendar. It was like a lucky.
Okay, I'll, I'll make sure Roger knows. The other, they also had a transition from the previous chair, who's now moved out of Winchester. They've had a transition in chairship as well, since the beginning of its formation. And so now Roger is, I, I will let him know too, Heather, when I continue my conversation with him as well later this week, to let, remind him that you're, that you're there.
Okay, that'd be great.
And to have better communication with you regarding it.
Maybe they need a mailing list.
Well, Brian, you see, you support them, Brian, right? Staff-wise?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't know how this keeps happening, I think, so I'm not, I don't, I'm not the one who emails everybody, meaning it's not my list, but maybe I just create a group for him, so he doesn't have to use old emails to do that. I think that's what's happening.
Okay, all right. Either way, we'll get them in for planning, to the Planning Board, to talk about long-term, large traffic projects that they have on their, ahead of them. Moving on, let's be- Uh, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. So we have, before, as it came in our packets, we have meeting minutes for March seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Yeah, and as, as is usual, I've got small edits, but I'm not going to read them in the meeting, and I don't think they need to be. I think you'll, you would not consider them any, they're not changes, so I think I'm just going to make a motion to accept, move to accept them as amended.
Do we have a second?
I will. I didn't look at them, but Maureen is very detail-oriented, so I will trust that she did.
All right, discussion. All right, let's vote. Roll call, please.
Meister, aye.
Anne, an aye.
I'm sorry, nobody heard what I said. I was muted. I'm going to have to abstain, because I'm out of town, and I was under the impression that we didn't have meeting minutes to this evening to review.
Okay.
Because of the conversation back and forth with Nancy and Suzanne, and so I never got to see them, so I will abstain.
Okay, um, Von Mering, aye, so it passes three oh one with Jerius abstaining as the one. All right, so let's move on. Also, if I remember correctly, and I know Nancy can, I think she's still waiting, Dea, for your edits for one of the meeting minutes, so she can incorporate that. Do you have a timeline when you might be able to get her those edits?
I was, okay, so I was under the impression that I didn't realize that I had edits.
Uh, yeah, you had edits for one of our, one of our meetings that you were just going to send to her, either electronically or drop in the box. Um, I don't remember the date off the top of my head.
That might have been me. I had like one word, but I, it's, it's not worth holding anything up.
Minutes were for the August eighteenth, I believe.
Okay.
So why don't we do this? For the August eighteenth, if you can get them to her by, this day's Tuesday, by end of the day Thursday, and then we'll just close it from there, and we'll, we'll go into getting those ready for our next Planning Board meeting for review and a, and hopefully approval.
Okay, um, Nancy, would you be so kind as to send me a copy of August eighteenth?
Happy to do it, no worries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks, Dea. Um, okay, so let's move on to the Heritage District appointments for Margaret Mack and Sarah Combs. Um, are they with us?
Hi, I'm Sarah, I'm here.
Hi, Sarah.
Too.
Hi. If, if you wanted to-
Margaret is here as well.
Oh, thank you. Um, if, if, if you would like to take a few minutes to give an update, and any information you want us to know, now is your time, so I'd love to hear from both of you.
Sure, so I was actually one of the original members for the Heritage District, and I actually live here in Rangeley, the Rangeley Heritage District. I'm at forty-two Rangeley Road, and I just love being part of this district and really helping to just enhance the area here around Rangeley Road and Ridge and Meadowcroft, just really helping to preserve this historic area. So happy to continue to be a part of it.
Thank you.
I agree. You know, what Sarah says, and just keeping the integrity of this very special neighborhood has been wonderful being on this committee.
Members of the Planning Board, any comments? Did any member want to make a a motion?
It's Maureen. I'm going to not vote, but I want to point out that their terms are staggered, and that's going to be important when somebody makes a motion. And I'm glad Brian brought this up, so you would have two different expiration dates, one for Margaret and one for Sarah. These are three-year.
So Brian, to confirm, Sarah would go to twenty twenty-three?
Correct.
And Margaret would go to twenty twenty-two?
Correct, we were late on re-upping Margaret's tenure.
And the motion is to appoint, correct? Would be the correct motion?
Correct, correct.
I would like to-
I don't-
Go ahead, Heather.
Oh, I don't want to slow, slow this down, but I don't really understand what we base this on, or how we even know why we would say yes or no.
Sure, so as part of the commission, two members are appointed by the Planning Board. In terms of why we would say no, I would say that there's probably little chance of that, unless that there were, I don't know, I guess you could say that if there was an owner of the property who was clearly, I don't know, a developer and wanted to do something, I, I don't really know. I really can't come up with something that, why you would say no. I think it's more of the fact that this is a, we have to appoint them, meaning that the way that we appoint them is by having them come in and quote, interview them. I think it's more of the fact that this is a, um, we have to appoint them, meaning that the way that we appoint them is by having them come in and quote, interview them. Um, I talk about it like you're not here, Sarah and Margaret, but I know. I know that you are, um, and I've enjoyed working with you for the past several years as well, so that's, um, that's exciting. But, um, but yeah, I mean, you bring up a good point, Heather, I think in this case, you know, there's, there's very little chance that, uh. People are willing to do work in town as volunteers, we tend to say yes.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, so why don't I go ahead and make a motion? And I believe I got this correct and that we are going to appoint, uh, Ms. Mack for a. Two-year term? Expiring it, and then, um, do we need separate motions?
I'm going to jump in, it's a three-year term, uh, there, it was, um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say it in plain English. The planning board didn't do what we were supposed to do.
Sure, sure, so.
To make the appointment, um, in the year when the person's term expires, so.
Okay.
It's a three-year term, but one year's already completed.
Okay, so let me, let me.
Frustrating.
Let me, let me rephrase that, I just wanna get it technically correct. We wanna nominate Ms. Mack for a term which will exp, for the position whose term expires in twenty twenty-one. And then we're gonna mark, um, nominate Ms. Combs for the position which.
Twenty twenty-two.
In twenty twenty-two.
No, sorry, Margaret, Margaret Mack is twenty-two. And Sarah Combs is twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yeah.
Okay, what he said, I, I, I moved.
Thanks, Brian, yes, it's Combs, I know it's hard.
Okay, so moved, so is there a second?
Is there a second? Uh, Heather handing a second. Um, uh, any discussion? Um, I'm just gonna quickly say to Ms. Mack and Ms. Combs, thank you so much for your service on the Heritage District Appointment. Uh, Heritage District, um, and, uh, I, I really appreciate it. And I know, um, that being from the foundation of that, it's been, you've done a lot of stuff to get to where we are now, so thank you.
Uh, thank you, I appreciate that.
Um, uh, I will call a vote now. Roll call, please.
Uh, Jurius says aye and apologizes for mispronouncing Ms. Combs's name.
It's okay, it's okay.
Anne and I.
Von Mary, aye? Motion passes three oh, uh, three oh one with Meister abstaining.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
You too, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, all you're doing, thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's move on to Fall Town Meeting articles. We're only eight minutes behind schedule, so we're doing pretty well.
Alright, I'm gonna bring this up.
Brian, I'm gonna let you kick it off, um, with an update, um, although, should we just go in order like we did last time? And then go on the updates of each article as we go through them?
Um, yeah, I think we should.
Time wise and management.
So, um. Let me see, Art is here, so that's great. So I'm here now, so this is, um, this is based upon, uh, some co, two conversations. That, um, I've had with legal counsel back and forth and I'm, um, I think I'm gonna tee up, tee up each article. And then let Art take over and then questions from the board to both of us after that, uh, going through each. So we'll go me and then Art and then open up the question for each of them. So Mina and Art went through this number one, this has to do with putting, uh, allowing home occupations. Um, and essentially home offices to be allowed in accessory, uh, accessory buildings. They had made some very minor edit, edits to this, um, no major changes. Um, uh, there really wasn't much, um, the only thing that they talked about is potentially not, not even putting this in the background. Uh, but that's kind of a minor thing, obviously not having to do with the article itself, but having to do with the background. I have nothing else for this article, Art, if you wanted to jump in, now's the time.
Well, Art transitions, I just want everyone to notice that the items that are noted in blue are the new items that came in at the last minute through legal. Those are not in our packets, for those who can see the screen.
Uh, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, that, that was just a sound check, I don't have anything else to add on this article.
Great.
Uh, planning board members, did you have any questions or did you want to move this one forward?
That sounds good, let's move it forward. Do we need a vote at this point?
We can vote them all in at the end based upon the document, or we could vote them one at a time. It would help to vote them in one at a time, because I need to get the hearing notice out and those need to be correct, so that would. The more we can vote in tonight, the better, for me.
So I'm head, I'm ready to vote that in, but I'm not sure how we make the motion to recommend that, what is this?
No, it'd be to put it on the.
Generic, like accessory buildings, um.
Um, I, I think you can base it on the document in terms of, uh, Planning Board's Article One to be put on the warrant.
Um, so move to recommend, uh, to vote to, uh, move Article One, what do we call them?
Planning, Planning Boards Article One, I don't, I don't know what else to co, yeah.
Well, for the minutes, shouldn't we, I, I want the minutes to record what we're doing. So I'll say relating to home occupations, um, placed in the town meeting warrant for fall to, fall, spring?
Fall.
Fall, where are we, this is summer, fall two thousand twenty.
Correct.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Meister, aye.
Jurius, aye.
Anne and I.
Von Mary, aye, passes four oh. Let's move on to number two.
So, um, it was requested to basically kind of put together all of the. All of the kind of maps, areas and tables into kind, in one article and have it be several different motions, so, um. This might not be like a as-is, this needs a little bit of work, uh, behind the scenes, um, meaning between legal and I. But in terms of the, um, the content that, um, you know, that I think we, we've gotten to. But this is talking about, um, changing all of the maps to incorporate a new sub-zone called the West Core. Um, and adding those associated descriptions and dimensional requirements in the tables and, um, everywhere else. So it's based, this, this article two is basically the addition of the West Core and everything associated with it. So, um, I, I did not make engineering create these maps yet, because frankly, they're down a person. You guys know that, that the person, the Brian Kerrigan, who was doing all of the maps from the very beginning, that's actually one of their major functions. Or not, wouldn't say major, but one of the functions is the assistant engineer is doing all the mapping. So now this is all for Beth, so the idea is I wanna get it completely finalized before I started showing you maps. So that's why the maps haven't been created yet, because I didn't, um, make Beth create them. But that's, this is what Article Two is doing based upon our conversation last time. So this is changing the heights to fifty-nine, um, and forty-five. And that's its own, that's the only thing that's different in the West Core, everything else in the West's, the West Core is, um, the same. In terms of uses with the North Core. So the only difference in the West Core is going a special permit height instead of sixty-five, now it's fifty-nine. But it still has the by right height of forty-five. And that's all I had for that one.
Art, did you have any comments?
Uh, no, the, um, there was a uniformity problem in the, um. In the maps in the, in the district before, that Brian and I had discussed, that, um. The parcels to the west of Main Street and below, I forget what the cross street is, um, were in the North Core. But their height was different than the other North Core heights. Um, and Brian, I think, although I haven't seen the maps, I think that's rectified here, right? There, because they're now their own district, their own sub-district.
That is correct, so the, not only did we fix that problem, um, but we created a new zone, um, for, that was more tailored to that area.
Yep, um, Brian and I also discussed that the hearing notice, uh, should list the properties that are going to be in the new West Core. So that people know whether they need to pay attention to that or not.
So Brian, you have that all set?
Yeah, this is, um, yeah, I'm trying to get the notice out as quickly as possible, because we're still shooting for October sixth. Which means this has to get in the paper like next week, so I, I kinda wanna. I mean, this is our last chance before October sixth to have, um, at least a, a. Um, whatever we do, it's obviously not finalized, but whatever we do, that's what's going to be shared at the October sixth hearing. Uh, we can obviously make changes after that, but, but that's what will be shared.
Um, can you remind me, I think we were, were we not also moving some? Parcels down to the, uh, is it the East Core?
There are three parts, yes, there are three parcels that are getting, um, subdued by the Town Common.
Okay, the Town Common.
Yeah, so, um, okay, yep, but that actually is not, yeah, that, that is taking place. And that's why, um, Art and Mina wanted to say exactly what parcels are going where, meaning. X amount, you know, all, X, X amount of parcels are currently in this zone, now they're gonna be in that zone.
Okay.
So that's, that's what he's trying to make it very clear to the property owners what's going on.
Right, and, and presumably that's actually further down the page here.
No, this was based, this was, uh, a, a note that we had meant, that he had mentioned today.
But where, but Brian, where is the, the change that Deib's talking about that's not in these articles, right?
Gotcha, um. It's a change in the map, that's how the, I mean, the, the, so the, the first map, Center Business District, that sets out the four zones. And we're amending that map in several different ways. One of them is, is what is bringing some in, into, from the North Core into the West Core. And another is bringing them from the North Core into the Town Common, but it's still one article.
But there's, but there's no mention of the Town Common District here.
Yeah, number two, first paragraph needs to be, uh, slightly modified to include language that includes. Um, uh, properly, um. Addressing the non-conformity or the, the term that.
Yeah, I, I would.
That would be, but that needs to be included in the first paragraph of number two.
It would be in the background, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in terms of why, I don't think, I mean, we would say that the article, that, um. That parcels are changing sub-zones. Um, but you don't necessarily, you don't say why in that, in that first paragraph. The why is in the background.
Right, Brian's right, of course, um, but isn't the point that the map amendment, let's see, creating a new West Core. But isn't there something also about moving, uh, three, if it's three parcels into the Town Common?
Yeah, I think we could do this as one, don't you think, Art? And it's really, so it'd be, um, I'll take a note here, but I mean, I. What, what, what I'm trying to get here is content, and then I can, you know.
Yeah, it's mapping, it's about what's ma, being mapped, it's about mapping.
Correct.
Yeah, so, so creating a new West Core sub-zone and moving some properties into the Town Common.
Correct. It's really par, specific parcel, parcels, whatever. Okay, I think I got it. Okay.
Um, I did have a question on, uh, bullet point four, when you're ready.
I am.
Um, so are you able to pull up, this might be hard to do quickly, but the historical map for the Center Business District?
Yeah, I could get that.
Um, I just wanna make sure, there's only two on that, one is the house, the historical house. But then there's the other historic structure, and I wanna make sure that it's not a party wall between those, between that and existing buildings. And that there is space, a five-foot setback.
Yeah, it's, um, it's right here. Um, okay, so what parcels are you specifically concerned about?
Next to the liquor store, there's the historical building on Main Street, that one right there. So that one has party walls on both sides and a five-foot clearance. Okay, so then that it's appropriate to say party wall unless boarding a freestanding historic structure. If so, they need to maintain a five-foot distance from that building, which is currently the existing conditions. Thank you, oh, I'm fine with number four then.
Um. Okay, um, so I believe we've, we've, we've captured this, uh, I think we have the right geometry in terms of what, what parcels are going where. Um, and then, like I said, things that are changing right now are just the special permit height. And the by, uh, um, sorry, just the special permit height of those, this new zone, uh, the West, the West Core. Uh, because the by right height is the same as the North Core, which is forty-five feet.
So I'm going to make a motion that we move, um, uh, this planning board, are we calling this Article Two?
I would, uh, I would say it's, um, the Center Business District, um, map. I would say that the West, the West Core, call it the West Core, the, yeah.
Well, I don't even think that, let's just call it the Center Business District Map. Um, let's, that, because that's an amendment to the Center to Business Map, um, to the Town Meeting Warrant. Um, for, again, for Fall Town Meeting.
And I will second that.
Um, before we proceed at our last meeting to the members of the planning board, I did, uh, offer to residents if they had comments on this. Um, to give them an opportunity to speak, I would like to offer that before we go to a vote. If that's okay with you, unless they spoke at, um, prior to me coming into the meeting.
Um, so there was one chat, um, somebody did mention something, if you wanna wait a sec. Ms. Marcia Kuhn. Um. So, um.
I would, I, it, just, we didn't have time last time, um, we're doing pretty good on our, on our rate of moving. I, I told them I would let them have time to speak if they had any, um, comments, concerns, questions.
So, yeah, there was one very quick one, um, says that, um, making zoning changes would impact the Wedge Neighborhood on Vine. And other streets, we live on Wedge Pond Road and request a serious review of this request. As well as limitations to any development on the Fells Hardware site. We are not against development, but we are against destroying the neighborhood feel that currently exists. Hope, uh, help those of us living downtown to continue to enjoy it, best, Marcia Kuhn. That's the only comment that I've received.
Okay, is that, um, you got that through email or chat during?
I just got that through the chat about thirty minutes ago.
Okay, and did anyone else, um, I know Mr. Stevens, you were anxious la, in our last meeting, did you wanna speak or are you all set? If you, if anyone wants to speak, please raise your hand, um, otherwise we'll move forward to a vote.
Uh, there he goes, go, go ahead, go, go right ahead, John.
Your Stevens.
Thank you. Uh, members of the planning board, thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you as well for making time to serve on the planning board. I think my comments were contained in the, uh, emails that I have sent to the, the board. And, uh, to, uh, Brian Zekely, Attorney Krieger, I don't think you were copied on those, I apologize. Uh, my concern, a- again, is that the West side of Main differs from the East side. And therefore the rules should be, in fact, different. Again, I don't think I need to speak further, because I have put that in a number of emails. And, uh, will likely, I apologize, continue to do so, trying to keep them short, thank you very much.
Thank you, um, so, uh, what, um. Is there anyone else before we move forward? Um, if you're not seeing anyone's hand raised, um, if, um.
You have a motion already, in a second.
Yep, I am going to go, so, um, let's, let's call to the vote. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Meister, aye?
Jurius, aye.
Anne and I.
Von Mary, aye, motion passes four oh, moving on to item number three.
So this is, um, I guess it's possible, Art, that while we're changing every other map in the Center Business District. We, we probably could put Article Three in with Article Two, because all it is is changing the Plan Unit Developments map. By taking out the West Side of Main Street. Um, would you agree that we should put all of the map articles into one, or because that this has nothing to do with the west core, technically, that we should keep this separate?
I think either way is fine, the question is whether it'll overwhelm or confuse town meeting to have them all together. But I don't, I don't mind introducing, uh, two and three by saying we're gonna have two, two map changes, but we, we're gonna give them to you separately, but if you wanna put them together, that's okay, it would, it would work.
I think we should keep them separate.
I agree.
We all agree.
Yeah, well, this was one of the few ones that we had no comments about, this was like, yep, that makes sense, that, um, you know, the larger stuff should happen on the east side, the forty to fifty, fifty-five foot should stuff should happen on the west side, so that's what this is about.
All right, is there a motion?
I move that the board, uh, Maureen, you had the language down, um, that the board puts this on the, puts the, uh, planning board motion, P U D map seven three three amendment on the town warrant article for September, or I'm sorry, fall of twenty twenty.
A second.
A discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I'll go again, Meister, aye?
Curious, aye.
Cannon, aye.
Von Marying, aye, motion passes four oh. Uh, Nancy, I just wanna make sure, are you catching all the motions as they go through?
Uh, for the most part, if I don't, I'll come back and catch it, um, when I hear again.
All right, thank you, Nancy, let us know if we're, if you, if you're not.
Yep, no.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item, number four, um, addressing flexible zoning.
So, uh, there are a number of, uh, small edits here that Mina and Art had went through, I'm gonna let Art kinda talk about, um, I believe, Art, there were two, there were two, uh, things that, um, you wanted to talk about, and that it's, it's relation to an approval not required, or some type of subdivision through the planning board. Um, and I bu- um, I believe that was here, Art, correct, talking about number two?
Um, yeah, that's right, so the, the initial draft said you can get a special permit if you can show that your property is otherwise eligible for an A and R endorsement or a subdivision approval. Um, but you don't actually have to go get one, you can just get the special permit, um, as long as it's subdivisible, I'll call it. Um, and we think that circumvents the subdivision control law, you can't allow a division of lots by a special permit by the zoning board, uh, it has to go through subdivision, um, or it was an A and R or an actual subdivision. So I changed number two there to say, if you need to divide the lots, you, uh, you still need to go before the planning board, uh, under the subdivision control law for A and R or subdivision approval.
I think that's fantastic, that one bothered me a lot, thank you, Art.
Yep, no, good. Um, the, um, the, the, the point is that if you, if the special, or, one point, there are a number of different scenarios here, but one point is that if the special permit approves reduced lot frontage, uh, to whatever you'll have, then you can go in and get an A and R endorsement, because now every lot will have the required frontage. Some will have the standard frontage and this, and one may have the reduced frontage. Um, if you, if the special permit does not address that, does not correct that problem for you, or there's no special permit at all, that is, the special permit deals with, um, uh, one of the other dimensions, the, uh, let's say lot area, but the, for some reason, the Z B A didn't give a special permit for reduced frontage, then you won't be able to do an A and R, you'll have to get subdivision approval. So that's, that's how the, this works. Now, when I first talked about this with Brian, this is a different point. When I first talked about it, I thought it had to do with vacant lots, um, where you had a, let's say, a majestic tree in the middle of it, and so you wanted to move the house over to one side to, um, uh, where it would violate a side yard setback, but to save the tree, you could get a special permit to do that. Um, sort of like a variance, but without the hardship standard. Um, but Brian clarified that what you have in mind is where there's al- where there already is a house, uh, and this would let you get a second house, and if you look at four, five, two, one, A, it does talk about an additional structure, so apparently, and Brian, I didn't pick up that word additional in the previous draft, maybe it was there. Um, apparently this does not apply to vacant lots at all, it only applies where there is already a house, is that, is that the intent?
So, it, um, it's certainly for the historic resource part, um, I guess it's possible there could be a historic resource that's not a house, but that's not really what we're worried about. What we're worried about here are preserving historic resources and preserving natural resources. So there is a case, I, I think there's both cases of a vacant land situation and a historic resource situation. Um, so you could have a, the same thing that you were talking about, you could have a specimen tree, a forty-eight inch tree, just right in the middle of a property, and you wanna save that tree, so it's not built upon yet, but you could build on it, so it's technically vacant land, but I also see the historic resource that you wanna save to create a second lot, so it's actually both cases that we want to address here.
Uh, then what do you do with the word additional in sub A there?
It says for any additional structure, meaning it doesn't necessarily have to have one.
Okay, all right, so you're viewing that as any, any new structure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you rather, uh, Art, that be rewarded, reworded differently to address that, um, just make it more clear? Or are you comfortable with any additional structure?
Um, I'd be happier if it was proposed or new rather than additional.
What about new?
New, sounds like it checks all the boxes.
I think, I think that works, I'd have to, I hate making zoning changes, I mean, amendments on the fly, as you know, but I, that seems to be a fairly innocuous change.
Well.
We can come back to it as well, um, right now it's a placeholder for the warrant, and we can, if it needs to be tweaked and stuff, we can do that. The intent is there.
Yeah, that, that's certainly take up the interaction in relation there too, is intended for exactly that purpose, so yes, you can tweak this.
So can I, can I throw a little bit of a wrench in here? Say that we have a small home, which, excuse me, I lost my mic there, which is perhaps not necessarily historic, but we would like to preserve it. So let's take eighty-eight Harvard Street, but instead of saying this is a historic structure, it's just a nice small home, and we would like to keep it and allow the developer to build a, another smaller structure next to it.
We would not be able to use the, the standard of a historic resource or a natural resource to save that, to save the small house.
Right, but one of the, one of the things we talked about was the need to do so, and that, that would certainly be a benefit to the town. So is it too late to tweak this to try to come up with wording which would permit that?
I'm wary of doing something like that, I, although I fully and wholeheartedly believe in it.
Um, I don't even know how we would describe that in such a way that it would, I, I just don't know the words for it.
I don't know if this is the right tool.
Yeah, I think the, I think what you're talking about, yeah, Diab, I think what you're talking about is probably changing the underlying, the actual zoning to a smaller square footage, in order to, I, I think that would do a better job of preserving the house, houses than, than this specific one, if that makes any sense. So instead of the minimum square footage being sixty-five hundred, maybe it's fifty-five hundred, and then the, that probably, I'm not, by the way, I'm not recommending that, I'm saying that if you actually do want to try to preserve the small houses, this, I would not add that provision to this bylaw. I agree with Heather Von Marying.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, cause otherwise we'd have to either do a lot of overlay zoning, and then we'd just say, oh, we just wanna apply it on this one and not that one, so I don't, I don't know how to go about doing that. This seemed like, the word flexible has an appeal here, so, but.
Well, we can always add to it, so, but, but, um, I, I, at some level, but in this, the one that, that we're talking about right now, specifically historic resource or a natural resource, um, not too many one, not too many are doing that in general, in terms of other communities, they're either doing one or the other, so this is already kind of a, a little bit of a heavy lift.
Hey, somebody's gotta lead.
Hey, gotta lift heavy things, right?
They, I, I see this as a baby step, a baby step, it's probably the biggest baby step, but I see it as a baby step. Um.
It's, it's, yes, I would say this is, um, a toddler with some assistance.
Uh, any questions from the planning board?
No, I think this is good.
Um, is there a motion?
I was curious, cause I know I had asked, and I dropped some notes off to Brian to discuss with Art, but at the very end, Mina had, at the very last end of this whole thing, can, Brian, can you scroll up? Um, Mina had said that there was, he was wondering about the plan, oh, right, so there's some other stuff in there. So, uh, there that B, I think, might be good, okay, so that's the, there's some edits there, we just, we haven't seen this before, people. Um, so, let's see.
So, Maureen, I'll just clarify, uh, in case you think Mina was being a little bit, uh, le- less respectful, less deferential than usual, his comments were, were to me, and I just decided to forward them on to Brian in their raw form. So, um, when he says I don't care for it, that, that was, that's not ordinarily advice we'd give a client.
Well, wait a sec, I haven't seen that, so this is, this is good grist for the gossip mill, what else did Mina say?
Uh, Mina's being real, and I appreciate realness, so, um, thanks, Maureen, for pointing this out, because Mina did, was pretty blunt with us, though, last week, and, um, about, um, about how to make sure that that building is then saved. Uh, you know, they're getting, they're getting a lot of relief from zoning, and how do we make sure to protect, um, that, so.
So, um, Maureen, I did receive, um, as I told you today, that I, I did receive those edits, um, the ones that, um, I think everything got in there, except for actually this, the last point that you had made, I think you wanted to either add to C or add a D, which said to, um, allow this to be a permanent, something about a permanent, um, resource to the town, benefit, a permanent benefit to the town, and Art and Mina had some issues with those words, so.
Oh, I'm not, right, no, I, I said also, let them figure it out, but I just knew that, Mina, I mean, we're fine, I'm totally fine.
Good, I just wanted to make sure that we did review that comment, and it, um, we, we just, we reviewed it, I just wanna make very clear.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, it's good, it's all good.
Uh, Mina's question is fascinating, though, because it's, I think it actually refers to the last five words, and shall not be further subdivided. Um, so that locks it in, not only is it already in a perpetual preservation restriction, but now it's also in, pretty much, it's locked down and subdivided, however, you know, there's been discussions about, um, you know, accessory dwelling, um, and other things, so the further subdivided does lead it into, it does lock it down, and I understand where Mina's comments are coming from on there, Art, did you have a position on that, or no?
Well, I agree, I agreed with Mina that B should come out, which was the, the point of his comment. Um, partly because of that last clause, shall not be further subdivided. Um, the, it, the, as long as the resource is being preserved, if they can further subdivide it under subdivision control, more power to them. Uh, I don't know why the special permit has to say that, the special permit just needs to say that the resource will be preserved, which it does in C. So I agree to take out B. Um, I also just have another small comment in A, I would take out the word requested, um, because the board might not, might not, uh, grant a special permit, giving all the relief that's been requested, the point is that the relief that's granted, the board has to find that that's necessary to preserve it, so I'll just take out the word requested.
Good.
I, I agree with Art, taking B out is, is okay.
So then, so just renumber, Brian?
Oh, there what Mina's comment, it's gone.
Wait, 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 can, can I, can we get, put B back, just, if the, only the last five words are, is there anything wrong with keeping the rest of that sentence, or is that just, is that duplicating something that's already there?
Um, I don't have a problem with up to the word therewith.
Okay, let's keep it.
Yeah, I mean, to, yeah, just kill the word therewith, keep going, Brian.
No, keep, keep therewith.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Wait.
It's not updated on our screen yet, Brian.
Oh, well, it is.
So, that, therewith on yours?
Uh, oh, no, so it just, yeah, pre-recorded therewith and shall not be further subdivided, I'm, um, taking out, yeah, I'm taking out the end subdivided.
And stop it therewith.
Therewith.
And I think we need, um, to, to put in some sort of a semicolon somewhere, and I'm offended by the double semicolon before B. Feel so much better now.
Okay.
All right.
I think that captures everything that.
Small, small point, uh, does the special permit get recorded therewith? The special permit's already, perhaps has already been recorded. Let's see, the restriction is shown on the plan, now I guess the plan gets recorded with the special permit, that's all right.
Well, the special permit is given first, and then they're go to do the A and R or the subdivision.
Yeah, but the, the plan of land that's to be recorded under B should be recorded with the special permit.
Got it, yes, that, sorry, we're script, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that's okay, and, um, yeah, that's fine.
Heather Cannon, did you have any comments?
No, I did not.
Okay, uh, is there a motion?
Uh, can we, could we actually move the document to the top of this one? That's, that's a good first motion. Um, so I move that the planning board place planning board article, flexible zoning, section four point five on the, uh, twenty twenty fall town meeting warrant.
Relating to flexible zoning.
Right.
Um, second.
All those in favor?
Curious, aye.
Meister, aye. Oh, and Meister, aye.
Von Marying, aye, motion passes four oh.
Heather, 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 can I ask a procedural question?
Yep.
Um, in the past, I know there's been some, um, different ways of formulating your vote at this stage. This is gonna go to a planning board hearing, right?
Um, correct.
And I'm, I'm just thinking about all the motions you're taking to put it on the warrant, uh, that sort of prejudges the outcome of the hearing, that you're still gonna go forward with it.
Should all of these be present at the hearing, then?
How, how have you done it in the past, do you remember?
I believe it's pres- now that I'm thinking, I think it's being pre- presenting at the hearing, and then after the hearing, the votes are placing on the warrant.
That's what I'm more comfortable with, unless you've consistently done it the way you're doing it now.
No, we, I, no, we have, no, w- we, we do not put, we do not place it on the warrant at this time. I, I'm, we have, sorry, I just realized, but you, you are right, and we are making a mistake right now, it should be presenting at the hearing, is the vote.
That you're gonna, yeah, that you're gonna carry it forward to the hearing or something, uh, all right, sorry, I didn't mention this earlier, can you just, uh, uh, post facto amend all your votes up to this point?
So I move that we amend all of our previous votes to state that these are being presented at the hearing for town fall meeting twenty twenty.
On October sixth.
On October sixth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Curious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Marying, aye, motion passes four oh. Moving on to number six, thank you, Art, for correcting that.
Yes, thank you. So, um, this was, um, something that was carried over from our previous town meeting, this, um, there were no changes, um, This is ready to go.
Wait a minute, what happened to the definition of natural resources?
Oh, jeez, I'm so sorry, that actually did.
I'm looking at my old printout, so yeah.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, um, so yeah, the number five, there, the new number five is um, the, the um, addition of the definition of a natural resource. This was um, completely reworked by um, legal to um, in, include um, basically a nod to the mass general law, chapter twenty one, section one, which states this, forests and all un-cultivated flora, land, soil, and soil resources, lakes, ponds, streams, underground and surface waters, and minerals, and natural deposits. So he just made it a little bit shorter, and in the background referenced the same MGL.
Yeah, so it already talked about, chapter twenty one, section one, um, that used to be in the definition itself. What I did is I just cribbed the relevant parts of the definition, and then the background just says, here's where it comes from.
I have a question, should we be introducing this first?
That would make sense.
Yes.
Um, we could also put it together as a motion one, motion two.
It might be, although let, I mean, it might be useful to have natural resources anyway.
If the word is used, um, throughout, it's not, so it's an undefined term. So it's beneficial either way, independent or for it, but in terms of presentation, it should probably go first at town meeting.
Okay, um, I'll move that up, and whether it's a motion one, motion two thing, and it's over, it's actually under the same article, or whether it's two separate articles, um, I will put this first.
Um, can you also make sure in the background, it says in Massachusetts general laws? Versus just general laws, um, so we put that to be Winchester's general laws.
Yeah, I think we, we, yeah, I think we typically say mass period, general laws, you're right.
Um, okay.
So um, I'm going to move that we fix that formatting.
Yeah, that's not fun. Um, but keep, yeah, keep moving.
I can't, because I'm waiting for the language.
There's.
Uh, I, I move that we uh, present uh, the, an article defining the term natural refor, resource at the uh, planning board hearing on October thirteenth.
Sixth.
I'm sorry. October sixth, my apologies.
Uh, second.
Discussion? And let's vote, roll call, please.
Jurious, aye.
Hannon, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Maring, aye. All right, now moving on to, on our, in our packet with seven, um, on Brian's screen is now number six. Um, I'm, I, I don't believe there's any new updates with this, this is existing as it was.
I think they just, but, or take any other action in relation there, too, that was the only update.
Um, planning board, do you feel a need to discuss this one?
No.
No.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion then?
Okay, I move that we um, present the article adding the disability access commission as a review authority to the planning board's hearing on October the
Sixth.
Sixth, thank you.
Do we have a second?
Um, second is Meister.
All those in favor?
Jurious, aye.
Hannon, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Maring, aye, motion passes four oh, moving on to the last one, number seven. Um, replacing special permit with site plan in section nine point five point eight, any legal changes?
Oh, changes, period.
Some mild background change. Which I appreciate, it's very concise and to the point.
We tried.
And you have succeeded.
Um, this, this has been longstanding, um, and we've talked about it many times, uh, if, I'm, I'm happy to entertain a vote, um, motion on this.
I will move that the planning board present the article amending the zoning bylaw to replace the word special with permit with site plan in section nine five eight at the planning board hearing on October the sixth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Jurious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Maring, aye, that's four oh, and that uh, concludes our fall town meeting articles review. Uh, quickly to the planning board of all these articles, just so I can prepare, and Brian, um, I, and I'm blanking, and at the moment, of what we decided on, who presents what? Where does Brian present, where do I present, the chair? I as in the chair? Or did you have preference?
Um I, let's, let's, can we scroll through them real quickly, because my brain has turned to slush? I think the
Occupations.
Yeah, that one's, the ones that I would be most concerned about, who gets to present it, is the ones where you have to um like, I would think that number, the, the one with, on the flexible zoning, might be one that would be more political, and so I would think that the chair should take the hit, rather than the town planner.
I think the CBD as well, it'd be the CBD and flexible zoning.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm just trying to figure out who is the appropriate target for the uh, disclosure of town meeting.
I don't, am I even there?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah, I can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, I did, I screwed up something on my screen, um, I guess I just think that, over the time, um, Brian presents in a very, uh, what, a non-advocacy sort of way, just factual, and that's desirable. And I think with some mastery of the zoning bylaw, that's desirable, so I'm not sure, I don't like the way, uh, I don't know. Anyway, I think that it's appropriate for Brian to present, what I think, though, Heather, is where we need clarification is, is as the um, first, the reports at town meeting, um, are we going, I mean, under, actually, state statute, the planning board reports to the town meeting on the um, conditions of the town. Um, and I, I'm hoping we're going to get back to reports that are actually to the town meeting, and maybe not everybody, who's every agency of the town should be I mean, we, do we really need to hear from the library? Well, maybe they'd like to tell us about how they're open part-time or whatever. But I really think that there's a lot going on in terms of development, and we should be getting back to reports. And that might um, flow into the um, this discussion. And then, back to the uh, presentations, I guess I'd like to see Brian maybe do something with all of them, because they're, they get a little complicated, but I do think that for our, at least, let's start with our hearing, that it would, it's a good opportunity to just get the whole thing started, and Brian usually presents at our hearing, so could we start with the hearing and take it from there?
Sounds good, I am happy to have Brian do the presenting at the hearing, and then we can take it from there. And obviously, on the floor of town meeting, if questions arise, or there's, I'm happy to speak at any time, so.
Maybe the ones that we think need more advocacy, or maybe I might say, real, uh, yeah, advocacy, that we might explain, so um, you, you might split it, and certainly, I've seen many presentations over the years, where's the, two people, um, maybe town manager and a selectman, or something like that, where they do share the pres, or school committee, same thing, they turn it over to the superintendent after school committee speaks. So I think some um, joint uh, approach might work for some of these.
Actually, I think that's what we did, um, not at the last town meeting, but the previous town meeting that we were in person. I gave the intro of, this is why we're doing this, and then Brian came in with the technical components of it.
Right.
Um, and that, that's fine, too, I just wanted a better idea, so as we get closer to town meeting, I know what my um, time commitment is to prepare for it.
Well, I also, again, I encourage you to try to find out what's with reports, and I would even advocate for a report. Um, even if there, I, if there maybe should be fewer reports, I think the planning board report is really important, there's so much development going on now.
I think they're gonna probably do it similar to like, last time, where there's a
They recorded us.
Yeah, they, they either do a recording of the report, or there's some type of PowerPoint with a recording. But I believe that's what they're going to do, just like they did last time.
I thought it was really successful, the recording at the last one, if that's the same way they're gonna do it, versus, ours really should not be in paper.
That's what I think, that's my point, thank you, Paige, Heather, exactly.
Yeah, no, I, as far as I know, they're doing it like they did previously.
Well, we didn't present last time. That recorded is fine.
That's what I mean, recorded.
But ours wasn't presented in a recorded form.
Yes, it was.
It was.
Okay, it's there, so shows how, what I remember.
Yeah, we got great positive feedback about it, people loved it.
Okay.
It's like, oh, you were so pleasant to hear, I, and also, you know, COVID had hit for so long, people were like, oh, I actually gotta hear your voice.
Anyway, um, so for the hearing, I do want to emphasize that we should be thinking of this as a kind of trial run, for also just the timing of it, and the clarity of it, and the slides, even if it's recorded, the imagery. Um, and I, we haven't seen or discussed anything like that, but I do think we um, are going to want to do that. Pictures?
So that was actually gonna be my question, is that, um, so we're not meeting before October sixth, so it's not like the whole board can
No, no.
weigh in, so is the idea is they'll do what they normally do, is I'll prepare something, what I do for the hearing, that's essentially my own, and then we'll have a critique, and go in, you know, go from there, kind of thing, right?
Right, but let's, sometimes I know in the past, and I'm only speaking for the past, when it's been in real life, um, when we're all together, but I do think, uh, if you can try to get it to the um, so, at least some of those, to the five-minute timeframe.
Oh, definitely.
I, I mean, imagining that.
Well, the article two is, is a behemoth, our, our article two is like, it's like form maps, a lot of descriptions, it's like the whole rigmarole of adding a zone, so that, that's probably in terms of mechanics, by far the most difficult. I don't know if that will be five minutes, but that, that'll be hard.
Well, you're allowed a five-minute extension, but then, with Zoom, I think people are even less wanting.
Yeah, no, and I, well, when I even told, um, you know, uh, when I even s- uh, have said that, you know, we're gonna have several articles, maybe in the five to seven range. Regardless, and people have no idea what they are, the i, the idea of that many planning board articles is our, is like, well, we'll think about it here, if we, if we keep pushing, if we keep pushing articles down the line, it's, obviously, the number of articles is going to grow.
Right.
So like, you know, so that was my argument, and
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and I'm like, sorry, guys, like, we got, you know, what do you want us to do, like, is save it for another year, and then we have twelve? And then you'll be like, oh, jeez, now you have twelve, you know, like, I mean.
No, no, we're all to get, we all believe this should go forward, uh, um, all I'm saying is, the tighter the presentation, the better.
Yeah, no, like I said, I'm just saying that it's gonna be difficult for that second one, but I will do my best.
Yeah, I don't think we would violate any open meeting laws, if you created a presentation and sent it out to us, so we can look at it before.
Yeah, and if you had any notes, I guess.
Yeah, because we would just be directing them to you, and it's your presentation.
Right, okay, well, um.
And those who complain about too many meeting articles have never shoveled snow.
Um, I don't know where to go with that.
Just a comment on the suggestion there, when you respond to, Brian, uh, obviously, don't reply all.
I think I'll send it individually, so that that won't even happen, that'll be the easiest way. Um, so yeah, so I'm going to um, basically, clean up all of, all of this, uh, to make it into a presentation, and as well as kind of um, see what I can get from Beth, I might, it, it might end up being not fully done until actually we're really ready to put him on the warrant. Just because I don't, I don't, I, I just don't want to speak for her and her workload. But I think that would be the only thing that I might not have, that looks, you know, kind of, from the engineering department, I can certainly make a few, make some maps, or, you know, kind of do edits on existing maps, but um, I'm gonna take you to make a presentation, and then go from there.
Brian, if you need me to, I will sketch something preliminary, at least so we have something if Beth can't, but prior to the hearing.
Okay.
Fingers crossed you can make it happen, but if for some reason, something.
Well, because, yeah, it's a number of maps.
To do, um, let me know, and I can quickly sketch something.
Yeah.
At least we have a visual for everyone.
We need to have something, it's a question of whether it's, I mean, so there, there were four actual maps that would need to be altered.
Yeah.
So, whatever, we'll, we'll, we'll get there, um, but.
It's just taking the map and creating the boundaries, coloring it, and it's a sketch map, it's still
Yeah.
Yeah, information out there for the hearing portion, and we can tighten it up later, but hopefully Beth can make it, but just in case, I will offer that up to you.
Okay.
Do that. I also, um, I, when you do, um, get this all tightened up, could you send it off to the chair of the ZVA? As well, so just keep, I know that
Yeah.
They've been coming to our meetings or watching at home, because I get um, feedback and stuff sometimes, so I just want to make sure that they have a copy of this, so if they have any questions or concerns, it gets brought to us either before or during the hearing.
Yeah, same for the building department as well.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and a reminder, the um, especially the historical commission, but also conservation, they should be uh, informed about what we're doing and invited to the hearing.
And the disability access commission as well.
Exactly, right.
I mean, the disability access commission knows that this has been on our radar, and something that we wanted to make sure.
Um, yes, of course, I will send it to, to everyone.
Heather, are you all set with, with me for this evening?
I have a question for Art. Um, without getting into the content, we are in the middle of a subdivision, um, hearing. There was something in our subdivision regs that you said last time, as we were closing out on Abbey Road, um, that you thought we should try to um, amend in our subdivision regs. Do you have any memory of what that was? Right, putting you on the spot.
Um No, I remember something, I remember something coming up, but I, Brian, yeah, I take it you don't remember what we talked about?
Correct, so I knew it had to do with the sta, all I knew, I knew it had to do with which section of the um, and I'm trying to get it actually right now, it's the, it's our, our rules and regs for the subdivision. Um, and it had to do with our standing uh, requirements.
Oh, yeah.
And then you were like, this, this, this doesn't make sense, and that's kind of all.
Yeah, um, I, I, well, I think it was what you changed in the Abbey Road tripartite, that said that you shall own, own the, um, no, that the road has to be transferred um, at some early stage, which lands you in, in a Greek streets situation? Right, wasn't it that the road had to be transferred with the lots?
Yeah, yeah. Um, that sounds about right, I, I, well, that'll at least put me in the right direction, that I can get to the bottom of this. Yeah.
Okay. All right, Maureen, I think, I think that was it, so Brian, thank you for that, for triggering that, we can, uh, we can talk more if you need to.
Yeah, I think we're.
Well, and because we're in the middle of a hearing, we want to not get in a position where there's something, you think we could, maybe we could cure it with some condition for this particular hearing.
Well, luckily, we have a month, or we haven't, yeah, we have until October thirteenth, until they come back. Um, so, we have some time to figure that out, I do remember, it wa, it was trying to avoid a Greek lot, a Greek streets situation. So that at least points me in the right direction, um, and if I have, or I'm sure I'll have questions, and I can get to the bottom of that with Art, long before um, October thirteenth.
Okay.
Well, I'll say thanks to Art.
Thank you, Art, so much for your time tonight.
Yep, thanks, everybody, good work, and.
And as well.
We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, on that, it is a minute before ten, um, if it's uh, all right with the planning board, um, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn as it is the day before school starts in a very hectic way. um, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn as it is the day before school starts in a very hectic way. So, um...
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion passes four oh. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Wind Cam as always. Uh, thank you Nancy, uh, for your time and, um, I will, we will be back on meeting again October sixth, and that is when our hearing will be. Um, and I believe we also on the sixth have a special permit application coming through, correct, Brian?
Six fifty-four, main.
Yep, so.
Notices go out tomorrow.
Be a very packed meeting.
I'm sure it will be.
Ooh, is there a way to put their PowerPoint on our website?
Yes, um, I can get Suzanne, uh, to do that.
Thank you.
And the, what we have in our packet is the most that came with our packet is the most current drawing set, correct?
Yeah, there was some, a paper packet that was put in this past week that should have had the only updated plans that incorporates the historic house as a residential unit. That was the only change. Obviously several pages changed because of that, but that was the only significant change.
Okay.
I think the historical commission should be invited to send, I mean formally asked to send somebody.
Yeah, I think they were, um, they were taking a look at it, or, um, I believe they're taking a look at it at their meeting on the twenty-eighth of this month.
Right, that they should be given advance notice about the hearing.
Oh, definitely, yes.
Yeah, I think Lauren has, uh, hit something, uh, really important on the head is that we want to make sure that historical sense of representative in case we have any questions.
Mm-hmm.
Design review does the same.
Right.
Um, and, um, so that, you know, as the questions arise, um, that they can answer them. Um, who's, um...
Should I take back by motion that we adjourned?
Well, this isn't, it's just administrative. I don't think.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, uh, the boards and commissions that, um, are, are present and are well, unknown that they're welcome to come. And, um, so if we have questions, we can ask them directly. So, right, if you just make sure that the boards and commissions that review, but, um, the special permits know that we would like them to have a representative, that would be awesome.
Yeah, so I guess it would be the design review, historic commission and disability access commission.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you, everyone. Wonderful evening. I will see you, well, I won't see you, but I'll hear you through Zoom on the eight, on the sixth, October sixth.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
You too, bye.